Well, it is 6:30 and I believe we are all here except for Dave O'Connor. So I will call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
Second.
Someone?
Sorry. I seconded.
So is my audio off?
I can hear you fine. Now it's off.
Now you're back.
But can you hear us?
Yes.
Can someone let me know if you can hear everyone else? Because I can't hear anyone.
Pam can't hear us.
I can hear everybody.
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, I am going to leave and come back on because there seems to be a problem with my audio. So I will be right back.
Walk amongst yourselves.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Pam.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Can hear me. Can someone say something so that I can see if I can hear other people?
Speak to me, Pam.
Turn your volume up.
Try again.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, hi, you're back.
We never left, Pam.
Oh, it was on me. Okay, I think I was looking for a motion for the adoption of remote participation.
So Alice moved it and I seconded.
Oh, and did you already all vote?
No, we were waiting for you.
Let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stilke Stowe, yes.
Oh, it's so good to hear everyone.
Even me.
Even you, Jeff. So, um. Quillen, do we have any public comment that have been submitted to you?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, let's move on to the Chair's report. Does anyone have anything for the good of the organization? Then I would like to, if not, I'd like to move on to, for a motion to approve the school committee meeting dates that are in the packet.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stilke Stowe, yes.
Okay, I would like to suggest that we take a number of items out of order because we do have a number of guests with us that will be making presentations. So specifically, what I would like to suggest is that we move first to 5E, which is the East Business Partnership Project, then 7B, the Budget Audit Presentation, and then 7E, the Bond Note. So is there any objection to doing that? Okay, hearing none. Let's move forward with with 5E, the East Campus Partnership Project.
Or. So I wanted to introduce, so this is about the discussion around a memorandum of understanding between Minuteman and Boston Veterinary Clinic. We have one of the principals, Paul Mattress, with us. We're also going to be joined shortly by Peter Koczyk of Goldstein and Stores, our attorneys. Paul presented to the officers last week, I believe, in executive session around some aspects of his business and their plans. And just to remind folks, this is a process that we went through with a request for information. We've been working with Goldstein and Stores in regards to how our special legislation can help support the partnership in regards to the renovation of the East Campus Building into an operating veterinary clinic as well as academic space and shared conference room space offices, et cetera. Peter will be with us to answer any questions around subsequent agreements briefly. But we wanted to have the opportunity for Paul to meet you all. And Paul has a presentation that he will give us. Julia is going to give Paul sharing privileges. You are muted now, Paul. They're unmuted. Very good. So I'll turn it over to Paul. Welcome.
Thanks, Ed. Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen so I can take a look at our presentation. Oh, to the wrong screen here. Can you see that or my?
We can see it.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, terrific. Well, thank you, Ed, for that introduction. And again, my name is Paul Mat Harris. I'm the CEO of Boston Veterinary Clinic. Myself and Brian Borkwin, who is Dr. Brian Borkwin or Dr. B. He and I founded Boston Veterinary Clinic. He's the veterinarian. And I'm not the veterinarian. I'm the business guy on the other side. So we make a really good team. And let me take you a little bit, tell you a little bit about who we are. So, you know, I always start my presentations with a simple statement that I think sums up where we, how we approach the veterinary medical landscape, the the experience of having a pet and needing medical care in Boston. And that simple statement is animals make us more human. And I think that really captures the essence of how we approach veterinary medicine and the experience that we want to, our pet parents to have. You know, it's, it's in the relationship between our companions, our pets, our dogs, our cats, our parrots, our lizards, whoever and whatever you call a companion pet. The same feeling can be felt that they're part of your family. They're, you know, integrated in your life. They hear you. They share experiences with you. They are an extension of you sometimes. They heal. They bring joy. Sometimes they bring terrible pain when they leave us. But in all of that, there is a relationship. And inside that relationship, there is something that we call the Human Animal Bond, which is very, you know, not an unusual statement. It's just that, you know, we draw energy and life from them and so do they. And what we provide for them in the form of care comes back to us many times over. And there is an institution called the Human Animal Human Animal Bond Institute. And, you know, we can, we can see it in our own, in our relationships where, you know, we walk our dogs, we get some exercise. But that Human Animal Bond extends to things like PTSD, autism, cardiovascular disease. There are so many benefits that companionships with pets bring the human condition. And inside of that came our, our second line or tagline, your other family doctor. You know, we believe pets are your family and we want to be the other family doctor. Now, you know, if we look at what's happening in the world and we always look back one year or two years to see the explosion of pet companionship in this, in this country and across the world, frankly. You know, when our, you know, when work took a little bit of backseat or a side seat, a lot of people found the ability to bring pets into their home where they weren't able to before. And we saw an explosion in the way pets were brought out of shelters and into people's homes and, and, but that was a trend that had been continuing and hadn't started 10 years ago. I mean, pets have left the garage or the outside and now they're in our beds. They sleep with us. 20% of people consider that their pet's reaction to a companion as important. You know, a huge number, I think the number here is 25% of during the conversations are about pets. I mean, this is, we've moved well beyond the, you know, the pets are our best friend. Pets have become our family and they've become a social glue in our communities. I mean, when, when, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a question. You know, when you look in the urban markets and look at the pet, it, it, dog, dog parks, you see people conversing where they've not known each other at all. They, they talk because their pets have friends. And, and, and that is an enormous, we think that's an enormous glue that, you know, creates a community. And what we believe is if the pets are healthy, if the community treats their pets in a healthy manner, then that's a better community to be part of. And that's where we think we can add value. So we started our organization back in 2012. We started off as a, as a mobile vet. We actually came to people's homes. And that was great to get start, but it wasn't really, we weren't able to provide a full broad services and all the care that they needed. And so in 2014, we found a location in Bay Village, Boston, and opened our first clinic. Then in 2015, we, you know, as a, as a brand new clinic, started from scratch, looking to get AHA accredited, which is, you know, our version of hospital accreditation by the industry standard. You know, might have been, you know, a huge undertaking, but we were certified right out of the gate in the first year. So we put together the clinic in a great way. That AHA accreditation means that we are meeting over 900 standards, exceeding 900 standards of care and operating processes and performance. And only 15% of the hospitals in the United States meet that standard. In 2018, we added a clinic. We bought a veterinary operations of a local called Ben Breakfast, but they were basically were, were a pet care facility that had a veterinary operation attached to it. We bought that and we have built that into a great clinic. In fact, we are expanding that clinic and we'll open in August of 2022, a full-service clinic that has, we're going from 1,200 square feet to 3,800 square feet in Brookline. But most importantly, in 2018, we became the first fear-free certified clinic in Boston. It was the second in Massachusetts. And what is that? Why is that important? Fear-free is at the very heart of the philosophy and in our operating philosophy and the way we treat our patients. Fear-free means we reduce the fear, anxiety and stress in a pet's visit with, with us. Their interactions with our doctors, our technicians, our front desk people, anyone they come in contact with have these fear-free principles in place. All our technicians are, everyone is trained in the same way. Everyone has reached at least three or four levels of training inside of Fear-Free. The clinic has been certified and has been recertified as of 2021. So this is a very big differentiator. This brings to our clients a much different experience. Not only are the pets fear, have less fear, so do our clients. And the ability to bring your pet in when care is needed without the fear and the stress that may come with that for them and for you, the more likely their care will happen and the more likely they will live a longer and healthier life. And that's our goal. And Fear-Free helps us get there every day. We get better and better at this every day. This is, there's no roadmap for Fear-Free. This is a, there are principles there that we can, we can learn, but how we act them out in our, in our everyday practice is, is kind of proprietary information. We, we do it. We get better and better at every year. And this is one aspect that we found with the people at Ed's, in, in the animal health group that we share. And it's really great that we share this philosophy right up front. Fear-free is a, is a philosophy that they will want to teach your students and we are so proud of that and so happy about that. That this, just based on just that alone, I think is a great reason for us to have this partnership. In 2021, we opened our second or third clinic in Boston's Seaport District. That's been a terrific addition. And again, as I said, in 2022, we're going to be expanding Brookline. But a big announcement we had about last week was we announced a partnership with a company called Denali Growth Partners and say, a private equity firm in Boston that invests in healthcare service and product companies. They made a minority investment in Boston Veterinary Clinic to help us expand our footprint across greater Boston. This will help us add clinics, but also provide a way of adding infrastructure and management. Also, technology and helping us to support the people that work with us. And so one of the trends in the market, obviously, and thank God for it, is that, you know, our technicians and technician assistants need to be making more money. And we have been proactive in providing more support for their total comp. We had a $2 increase across the board just about a month ago. And we're continuing to look to ways to improve the career that is veterinary technician. And so, you know, that is very much related to what we're talking about here with you and the relationship with Minuteman. You know, Brian and I are part of an organization. We sit on the board of NAMV, which is Not One More Vet. And that organization deals with, in the veterinary industry, with death by suicide. And unfortunately, veterinary and veterinary profession has a much higher rate of suicide than other medical professions. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But, you know, where we work with people in this profession, we provide peer support, we provide monetary support. But what we're also moving towards is to provide a path towards wellness and creating the, a program that allows clinics and people in, that work in the clinics to, to start to move towards a better way of doing things. And and we've just launched something called Clear Blueprint, which is a program that we're going to, we're rolling out to the nation's clinics. It's voluntary, but it's, it's kind of an accreditation that will allow them to, to look at their organizations, see the opportunities they have, both in raising pay and dealing with interpersonal issues, client issues, and giving them a better pathway towards a better environment. And so this is, you know, an extension, we believe that our, our relationship with Minuteman will be an extension of, of that work in, by working with young people and bringing to them a profession that they could make a life out of. That is very much in keeping with, you know, constantly moving this industry towards a better place. The person who just walked in is Brian Borkwin. He's, I guess, he's my husband and also the founder and chief veterinary officer of Boston Veterinary Clinic.
And dog walker.
And dog walker. So and, and, you know, please, at the end, we'll, we'll take questions. But if you have any questions that are either for Brian or I, please just let me know. Um, so here's just a quick slide on our, our locations. You know, we started in South End Bay Village. That is our new location in Brookline. And that is what our Seaport location looks like. So, you know, we're rapidly expanding. And last week, we just announced that we will be adding two more clinics, one in Charlestown and one in Wellesley. So those are going to be slated to open at the end of 2022, beginning of 2023. And of course, we were looking forward to announcing our, our relationship with Minuteman, the MOU, and opening, you know, the, the coming soon of BBC Lexington. One other, and I've kind of touched upon this with respect to NAMV, but one of the key values we, 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 we live by is community service, bringing not only money, but resources and time to, to our communities wherever we are. We always have, our, our events are attached to charitable donations. So we do a, one of our, you see a picture there of our Santa pet photos. We, we do pet photos with our, with Santa in a, in a snow globe because of COVID. We didn't want people sitting on Santa's lap. So we created that. And that's been a huge success. Every year it gets bigger and bigger. We were, we go out to the community, we answer questions, we educate our clients, but also educate the community on better ways of, of living with your pets. We've worked with the Rotary Club of Brookline to, you know, in their dog days. So we're, we're out there. We're always in, in the community. We look, look to, you know, continue to push into the community and provide where we can education and service. Um, I didn't include any financial information in this presentation because there, you know, this is going to be a public document. But I'm happy to address any financial questions you may have. Right now, we, I did this with the executive. However, they did see our historical financials and our projected financials. Just to give you a general idea, right now, in 2021, we ended the year roughly $9 million of revenue and roughly about $800,000, $900,000 of EBITDA. We look next year to be closer to $10 million. And our five-year plan takes us to roughly $36 million in revenue. So this, our plan is to add, we'll have a, a, a group of clinics roughly around 10 in the next five years. So we have three now. We're looking to add another seven over that period of time. And BBC Lexington is, is one of those clinics. This is a little bit about us. You know, Brian is obviously the chief veterinary officer. That's Brody, by the way, who's being obnoxious. He's our, he was our inspiration behind our logo. And we adopted him. He was our first client when we were mobile vets. His parents had to, I'm sorry, one of our patients, his parents unfortunately had to ask for a change at home and we were more than happy to, to accommodate. But Brian has known, wanted to be a veterinarian ever since he's a child in his, on his, his parent, grandparents, dairy farms in upstate New York. He's a graduate of Cornell University. You know, if Brian were to say, and he can say it for himself, but his areas of focus have always been in pain management and geriatric management and geriatric care and dentistry. So that's one of his passions. Again, I'm not the veterinarian, but I'm, I'm more of a finance guy. I came out of Wall Street many years ago. After Wall Street, I started my own firm, ran that for a while, sold that, and then we met. And the impetus behind changing or creating Boston Veterinary Clinic, yeah, okay, is to, it was because Brian found corporate medicine place he worked not satisfying, not, not meeting the standards of his care, not, not meeting the standards of, of client service. And that's what we set out to do. And I think we've accomplished a good part of that, but there's lots more to do. And we're very excited about the relationship we will, we hope to have with Minuteman. When we first, when Ed invited us up to see the campus, you know, I still talk about how I was blown away by the design of the school, the thoughtfulness behind the details of the way it was put together. It's just astounding how well thought through everything is. And, and just to be part of something is well thought through, that is just, is very exciting. And we, you know, we, we love Ed. We just, you know, we get a lot of energy out of his passion. We look forward to working with him. Even though he is retiring, we expect that we will continue to see him a lot and will, if not, we'll, we'll put ourselves on his front door and see him a lot. He doesn't know that, but we will. And, and we look forward to, you know, to um, we look forward to, to building out the Lexington campus. It's a fantastic location. We're excited about the opportunity. We see, we've never done this before, by the way. Of course, you know, I don't think anyone has, but this is part of what we do, or, you know, when we, and just to give you a small background, and I'll be quiet after this, but when we started our clinic from scratch, we had no, we didn't have anyone working for us. We couldn't attract highly qualified talent because they just didn't know us. We were the new guys on the block. And so one of the things we had to do was we, we went to the Northeastern University Cooperative and asked their students, you know, they did a fifth year in clinics and we took those students and we trained them to be veterinary technicians. And they would stay with us for about a year and a half, two, maybe they come back for a summer. But they were, we had to start from scratch with them. And in doing that, today we have about 16 students in veterinary school that have gone through our program of training and we wrote their college admission letters and got them into, into veterinary school. We just got our first doctor back from, from that program. She started with us as a receptionist and moved all the way through technician, graduated, graduated vet, vet schools, now working in our Seaport Clinic and doing fantastic. So we hope to, that will give you an example of our commitment to education. It's one of the, that's one of the things I'm proudest of. And I hope to be as proud of, of our work with Minuteman in the future. So let me stop there and ask if anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Paul. I just want to introduce Peter Koszinski as well. He's our attorney who's been helping us work the language of the MOU in light of our ideas and can answer any questions as well. And anybody have questions for Paul? Or Peter?
I guess, I, I, well, I'm sorry. I have one small question. I just, how do you envision interacting, you know, I mean, you guys obviously are running a full-fledged vet clinic. How do you envision integrating our students into that process?
That's a great question. I think, you know, one of the first things we're, we're going to focus on is design of the clinics. We, of course, Fear-Free being a very much a center part of our philosophy, we've designed our clinics around Fear-Free. It means the cat areas are different from the dog areas, but they have distinct separate exam rooms, waiting areas and treatment rooms. We expect to do something very similar. In the same vein, you know, we are going to work with Ed's group and, and look and see how they, the students will interact with us in our environment. And so I imagine our rooms are going to be a bit bigger. Maybe we have observation areas. You know, I, I don't know how exactly we'll design this, but I think, you know, we'll work in tandem with Ed. We'll go outside the industry and ask for people's opinions too and see how that, look for best practices there. I think the, the idea is we want the students to be a part of, you know, from the very beginning, a part of the experience. You know, we have both veterinary assistants and veterinary technicians in our clinics. Veterinary assistants are really people that don't have any veterinary experience. So we start them very much at the beginning. Sometimes they're no-takers. Sometimes they're, you know, pulling vaccinations, but they're, they're learning as they go. And we give them goals for, for increasing their proficiency in the, in the, in the, in the profession. So they move up in skill level on a very, you know, expected timeframe. And, and one of the tenants of, and Brian will talk about this, if, is when we talk to people who work in our clinic, one of our last questions is, do you like to teach? And we do that because we're, we're a teaching place. We, we have to teach. We want to teach. It only makes our place It only makes our place our operations better. And so that willingness to teach is a very much important part of of Boston Veterinary Clinic, both from the veterinary all the way down to veterinary technician. So, you know, like I said, not many people have done this, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this very hard. But, you know, we expect that they will, you know, we're gonna work with them, just like we work with a veterinary assistant, someone new to the industry.
One of the things, Jennifer, about this relationship is that it mirrors relationships we've already had in place for many decades in terms of clinical site agreements, how our health students interact with with patients at a assisted living or a nursing home. We have site, you know, clinical site agreements with other entities and we, that's sort of after the MOU is in place, that sort of gives everyone the sort of the codification of our commitment to work on two agreements. One is a lease agreement and the third one is the the clinical site agreement, which we have a lot of experience in.
I was gonna say something similar to that. I mean, just given the way that we we learn in vet school, all of the vet schools are teaching hospitals, so all veterinarians have gone through that track. And then to to Paul's point, a necessity as urban practice is to utilize the students. And that has included high school students as well as college students. We've got a number of high schooler students, high schoolers, high school students who have who have come through. And so just that level of, and I actually, I think it probably would sets us apart from, you know, a more traditional, you know, maybe suburban practice that where people have been working there for, you know, the clinic I I learned to be a vet, you know, they'd all been there for thirty years. They weren't keen on teaching you, you, you were quiet and you watched and that was, that's how you learned. Where we, there's a lot of acquisiveness and a lot of questions and and impact into every day is time for rounds and other stuff. So while I don't pretend to think that I know exactly how this will look in the end, the philosophies and the the interests are there. We just gotta find a way to to make it work in this particular model. But the it's it's not a novel concept, just a big tweak.
And and you know, just that, you know, we have to be mindful to of safety first, you know. Animal handling is a big first step. And of course, they're going to learn a lot of that in in the non-clinical part of their academics. But in the actual, you know, clinical, that will be one of the first things they learn and, you know, they have to start there. But, you know, we always believe in in operating in a safe environment, in a fear-free environment. So those are those are two major things I'll learn our fun.
So I have one follow-up question before Jeff gets in, sorry, Jeff. Is the fear free thing, I think, is fabulous, but you guys obviously have been working on it and it's proprietary. Do you envision, I mean, I I guess, because you can't ask a dog if it's okay if a if a student comes into the room, right? The way they do at a regular medical clinic. Are you gonna ask these kids to sign nondisclosures or?
Oh, no, no. So so I love to say that fear free was my 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 child. It it actually come from a woman named Sophia Lynn, who actually originally created gentle handling out on the West Coast and it morphed into fear free, which has been made popular by Marty Becker, America's Vet. But the the, I guess I put a quarter in every time I say the word fear free. But the ideas are not are not our, we definitely have tailored them and I would say we've embraced them. We were the second clinic in Massachusetts and only because we got beat by someone that only had two employees. And we were the first in Boston, so it definitely is integral. And we we joke that it's not only fear free for the animals, but it's for our employees and our students as well. There'll be no yelling, no throwing of of tools, et cetera. So, yeah, sadly, it's not, it's not just ours. It's, and in fact, some people even said we should say gentle handling or not be so fear free focused. But and then as far as, that's actually a great question. You you really know the fear free well. We do have to be mindful of how many people do go in and out of the rooms. That's one of the things Paul said is that we probably foresee the use of cameras or something for some of the for the more observational stuff. But fortunately, doggies, especially younger dogs and pups, tend to be social by nature. So usually the more humans, the better for them. I don't know that we'll be seeing zonics there. We haven't gotten to that point. That definitely would not be as keen for 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 a bunch of people. And then cats, it depends on the cats. So what we do currently is is all in, all out. So the assistant, the tech and the assistant, by the way, has been high school students in the past at at Boston Medical Clinic. You basically need to be able to type, listen and and use spell spell check. And so they we would go in as a unit, so the technician, the assistant and the doctor. And cats do better with that when it's all in, all out. But we we do utilize lots of windows and stuff, so we can actually have, especially for some of the cool stuff. We have a lot of students there, they all want to see, but we can't have them all in the room. So the nice thing is you guys have lots of space. We're a little a little cramped in the in an urban environment, there's not as much room. But if we can make that work in downtown Bay Village, we definitely can make it work in your roomy, roomy Lexington.
Yeah, I I want to leave you with the idea that there are things that are, you know, trade secrets. It's really more a body of knowledge and, you know, having built this over time and it's just part of the the DNA. So nothing, nothing is proprietary in that sense. It's just, it's just the way we work that.
And you want to share it?
Yeah, of course.
I think that's important. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jeff.
I have two kinds of related questions, and if any of them are inappropriate for an a open session, please let me know, I'm okay with that. And they both have to do with your rate of growth. So you are very ambitious in your rate of growth. And from the point of view of demand, I'm sure that that's appropriate. But your your growth will require two things that are not always easy to get, which is a cash flow or investment. And maybe you alluded to that a little bit earlier and also getting enough qualified veterinarians. So how are you handling, if you can tell us in an open session, those two issues of cash flow and investment to open all these clinics in a fairly short period of time? And also getting sufficient number of qualified veterinarians at the same time?
That's a great question. Yeah, Brian will handle veterinarians and I'll handle the kitchen.
So we, before you start, do not spread this around, but we have the luxury right now, and some of this is being in urban practice in fear free and non-v and all that, we have more applicants for veterinarians than we have spots, which is unheard of currently, there's a national veterinary crisis. I know veterinarians who have been looking for two, three years. We've had an interview a week for this month. Now, I would love to say that's all my awesomeness and Paul's awesomeness. I think being a Boston clinic helps. But, you know, the embracing of fear free, non-v, shorter days, actually allowing lunch breaks, which I know sounds crazy, but so compensation, compensation, all of that has led us to be very fortunate and attracting only the, I mean, we we only attract the best to the people. We just chose to not have them come back. So we're actually, we're to we're to continue to choose that. So but that's a great question and it's something that, you know, keeps me up sometimes at night. But right now, we have the vets we need for our expansion plus the two next clinics. So this would actually be the first clinic that we quote, wouldn't have anyone picked for yet, because obviously we have to have the yes version. But that that has not been on. And and to the reason why this is so attractive, it's actually, it's actually the support staff in Massachusetts, and that's why I actually joined the the NVMA board, technicians are not a licensed profession. And that may sound good on paper, but what it means is a lot of young Americans who are looking for licensed professional jobs don't come to Massachusetts. So actually having a licensed vet tech is is harder to find for us. I wouldn't really experience, right? So somewhere I trust with surgery is harder to find the veterinarian. We've actually had veterinarians in their first year sometimes teching for us because we didn't have enough techs, which is if there was ever a reason why this program should exist, it's it's because there's such a shortage. And these are good paying jobs. I mean, this is, this is not, I guess I can't say working at Starbucks because Starbucks pays too low now, too. But, you know, these, these are, these are trade tech schools that they're not just staying in Massachusetts. We really like to help with that.
As far as cash flow goes, the the reason, the primary driver behind the minority investment was to pre-fund the expansion. And so based on our projections, we're fully funded for our expansion, including Lexington. So that was a, you know, an important part to put in place. Prior to that, we were relying on SBA debt, bank debt to expand. And the SBA was what a great organization and ability to get us from point A to point B. And I think now we've moved, we've moved into a much better financial picture. And then we don't have the burden of debt repayment. We are cash flow positive across the existing three clinics. So there's both internal cash flow and of course, the investment to fund future growth.
And my only follow-up would be, I think that it sounds like very good synergy. I like the direction you're going in and being a vet tech would be a lot more fun than working at Starbucks.
Yeah.
Any of the school committee members have a question for our attorney in regards to the process? Or the MOU itself?
Alice.
Hi. I I'm sure you know, as as Paul and Dr. B. the second said, we are not familiar with private, public, private partnerships, as this is the first one to be done, from what I understand, in Massachusetts for a public vocational school. So what I want to know is whether there's anything that we should be aware of in this contract in terms of what we are committing to? In terms of the building out of the property, in terms of the length of the agreement? Is there anything in there that we should be aware of that we might not notice?
Hi, there. Good, good, good question for sure. You know, I don't think that the the fact that this is a public-private partnership with a a public entity on on one side and a private entity on the other. It is, that is somewhat unusual, I guess, in Massachusetts, although we're seeing more and more of these in different industries and sectors. But the the business deal itself, I think, is won't end up being super complicated. As you know, we have this MOU that we are looking to to execute if if we have approval to do that. And that lays out sort of a path towards finalizing and detailing the other documents that we think will will document the relationship. And we think, although we haven't really engaged in great detail with BBC, but we think that the best way to do it is is a lease agreement. And the lease would govern both the sort of build out and the cost sharing of the build out. And we we haven't arrived at the business terms on all those things yet. We'll we'll dig in as the next step. And then Minuteman would be would be committing to offer up under the lease portions of the building to to BBC with these sort of cooperative relationships between the school and the school of space and also the programming. So I don't know if that gets fully to the question, but we we don't have some of those details worked worked out. This is just the first step.
Thanks, Peter. Any other questions or?
Judy. Thank you. This is quite interesting. And as you say, this is new territory for all of us. Just to round out the conversation, just had a quick question about market share. You haven't been in this area before and there are already some established like-minded facilities, maybe not fear free. But so again, without giving away your trade secrets, you know, how do you expect to, you know, get your foot in the door on the the one twenty-eight belt, if you would?
Uh, that's a great question. I we we have one of the things that special about us or is unique of us is we, that's what we've done. We've started clinics from scratch. So we have, we only bought, you know, BBC Brookline. And but when that really came was with a place to kind of hang our hats, it didn't come with a lot of revenue. And so we kind of started that from scratch as well. So we're used to doing that. And we think about the market way in advance of opening our doors. So when we start this relationship, when we start to, you know, before we swing a hammer, we're going to be in the community, we're going to be meeting people, we're going to start you know, having events sponsoring you know, organizations inside of Lexington, the surrounding communities. We're going to start to become part of the community while in advance of of and and provide a service and an education to the community. And in that way, we start for people to get to know us and find us, you know. Obviously, advertising and all is well and, you know, it's it's great. We we, you know, we do our fair share of social media, our website's great. But, you know, we have great, you know, reviews from clients and good ratings like that. That's, those are important pieces. But we find that, you know, word of mouth is our primary, the primary way that we we build ourselves. And so we do that by getting to know people. And, you know, it's kind of like a, you you can't really shortcut that as much as, you know, you feel like you're, you know, we've been at this for so many years and got so many clinics. You know, when you walk, as to your point, when you come into a community where there are many and they're all doing well and they're, you know, you know, what's so special about you? And so what's special is, you know, for us to get out there and to to get to know people and they get to know us. So it's a little bit block and tackle. And, you know, but that's how we've done it and we expect that this would be no different.
Also, also like this, the Lexington area is not, is not novel to me. After I graduated Cornell, I was in Boston for five years, then I went to Belmont. I was working at a fresh pond for six years. During that time, I decided I wanted to redo my kitchen and my bathroom. So I did a lot of relief work in the Concord Carlisle area. It is extremely underserved. A company called Healthy Pets, it was there for a while, did not do a great job with their clinics and a number of their clinics closed. They have yet to reopen. The other other competition in Lexington, Lexington Bedford, which is a vet core clinic, my nemesis. So I'll take pride in not competing with them. And then all joking aside, the just nationwide, there are not enough veterinarians for the amount of animals. So the number of animals is a continued increase, which is good for job security for me. So I I'm not super concerned. The big thing is going to be just, you know, this isn't where it's located, is it one of our flashy street corners? So it will involve some advertising, but also I think just from early discussions where all these students are coming from, students are a great, a great walking billboard. And so I'm not, I'm not super concerned about that. I think I think of anything, once the word gets out and and people like, people like teaching hospital ideas, right? It's it's, you feel like you're giving back, you're doing something. So I I'm not too too worried about that, but it's a great question.
Yeah, I I think that the the short answer is we try to think outside the box when it comes to that. And, you know, I think we'd look to us to do something similar in in Lexington as well.
Right.
Um, I I have a question. Oh, actually, Alice, go ahead and then I'll go to my question.
So I just want to know whether you're going to expand the fear free to the human doctor relationships.
It's funny you mentioned that. I am, I had a exchange the other day with someone on the phone with someone trying to tell me that they don't do fear free with for kids. Because that's a comparison is kids in.
Pediatrics and geriatrics.
And I was like, well, that's not true. I mean, they use T-Lozol suckers and clown, I mean, clowns and for those like clowns. And they they actually, it it hasn't gone as far as it has with 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 the animals, but it's definitely there. Now, for adults, that's a whole other story. I I see. Geriatrics, actually, they have not gone very far with it all.
Yeah. But, I mean, you know, we look at pediatrics and geriatrics as constantly, you know, it's because the people you're taking care of, you're taking care of your child. Often the child can't can't articulate exactly what's going on. So the pediatrician has to has to discover, same thing with veterinarians and in geriatrics, something, you know, that can happen too. So, you know, we're always dealing with a family member who has to take care of their other family member. And inside of that, there's a, there can be a lot of fear. I mean, there can be a lot of like uncertainties, especially when things start happening and they don't know what's going on. And when the dog starts vomiting, what just happened? Why is that happening? And, you know, so that, that's why fear free is important.
Yep. No, I get it. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I might have another question after Pam. I don't know.
Well, actually, Michael had his hand up.
Thank you, Pam. I think this is a question for Mr. Kachansky. Will our agreement with Boston Veterinary Care survive and extend to a successor corporation? If BBC decides to, you know, sell to, to some other entity?
Say that again to somebody chiming. So I, I, I think that'll be, that'll be up to us to, to try to decide. We can, we can write that all sorts of different ways. We can limit it to this entity and have some approval rights over changes of control and, and what that would mean under the lease. So happy to, happy to think about that with, with the team.
Thanks. I, I say that as a, as a pet owner of many years, who's longtime family vet retired. And now the sign out in front of the office says thrive.
It's a corporate, it's Pathways, it's called Pathways before they changed their name. They're the largest corporate, VCA, Veteran Corporation of America is the largest in the country. Pathways is right behind them as the largest in, they bought a lot of independent clinics.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question on the MOU. And one of the things I was just curious about in the, the copy that was in our packet, there are a couple of blanks, particularly in three A and three B. And is that intended that would be signing the MOU with those blanks with the intention that be discussed in the lease agreement? Or what, what's the intention there?
Yeah, our, our preference would be this was a, a near final draft, but you guys move, move quickly. So that's what, that's what's in front of you for now. I mean, we, we, we could certainly, my preference would be to try to fill those things in before we sign it. And because this is a preliminary agreement, it could be a range. If we're not ready yet to decide on what the term, for instance, of a lease is going to be, we could, we could put a range in there as a placeholder in this preliminary document and then pin it down in the, in the lease itself. And I, and I think Ed's intention is, is to bring the final lease back to you all for, for approval. Once that's been fully negotiated.
Yeah, the lease agreement absolutely would come back to the school committee and in draft form, we'll do more discussion and then vote on it. I trust Peter's assessment that it's not overly complicated. But that's what they told me when we wanted to build a new school. It's sort of like the MOU in my mind, and we didn't fill in some blanks because we didn't want to until it was run by the school committee and endorsed. And maybe the vote should be to authorize the superintendent to enter into the MOU. Once those things are reviewed with the chair. So what's, once this is, this step is taken, we sort of get more intentional. And the, the pedal goes further down to the metal. For me.
Okay, Alice.
So that actually was one of my questions related to one of my questions, which is there's only one signature line. Is the school committee not signing this or we, what, what is, who's signing with this here?
Well, the vote would be to authorize the superintendent to sign and then Paul and Brian would sign for BBC. Right, Peter?
Yeah, I think so. Ed, we've, we've, I don't know too much about how your authority works, but that, that certainly sounds right to me.
Okay, Alice.
So I'll ask a tough question. There's a building that has to be dealt with because it's not a veterinary clinic and needs some renovation and so forth. And do you, are you able to share with us any sense of the kinds of scope of such a project in your minds? Without, you know, making any commitments to the scope, but just to give us some concept. Because we are, you know, pretty strongly committed to our communities that we're not going to incur debt. Since we just incurred a ton of debt. So we have to be very careful and mindful of our communities whose full faith and credit is involved in our activities. So can you answer that or not?
I can, I can give you a sense of what, say, an existing clinic, like we just built, you know, cost. And I'll give you a, you know, a sense of kind of the scope of what that is. So our Seaport Clinic has seven exam rooms. Again, you know, this is all, you know, in an urban environment, it's probably 3,800 square feet. Separate cat and dog treatment, big treatment area, separate cat and dog, surgical diagnostics, x-ray, surgical operating room, dental room, all in, you know, that clinic. And we, and we started from scratch with that. In other words, that building was not what we call a white box. And we didn't start with the walls like you see them and the electrical outlets like you see them. We had to put all of that in, including, you know, everything. So, you know, we, we got a healthy donation from the, the building itself. And so together with the building and it was roughly about $2 million. Now, you know, in this case, you have a sort of a white box. There is, there are walls, there are electrical surfaces, we can move things around. We're not starting from bringing the electrical all the way into the building and bringing the plumbing to where it needs to be. This is all, there's all some pieces in place. So in the design that we'll come up with, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, we can talk about that. We get a better idea once we do that of what the cost will be. But, you know, roughly, you know, you know, so in our most expensive clinic, which was Seaport, and we had, we were required to use union labor, we're, we're close to about $400 a square foot. So that gives you a kind of an idea of what the overall cost, including some equipment would be for a clinic. Now, I know prevailing wage is in, you know, is an issue here. So, you know, I would say we're going to be in the mid to upper 300s in terms of cost per square foot. So, you know, again, also, you know, we're dealing with about 6,000 square feet of built space. A lot of our exam rooms will be bigger, you know, you know, all, all our footprints will be a bit bigger to accommodate students, both in observation and in work. So, you know, even though it is a little bigger, it's not like you have to add another $300 to that, that size. You just, you know, you're kind of like, it'll probably be a little bit less than the, in the mid 300s because of that. And, you know, we're, so, you know, it kind of gives you a sense, you know, when it comes to equipment, we're part of a, a purchasing group. It's the largest purchasing group in the country. By, by virtue of that, we are extended some of the best discounts across both supplies, pharmaceuticals and equipment. And so we have relationships that, you know, and, and discounts that will extend to this project as well. And I would expect that in this conversation, as we speak to, you know, our vendors, we will, you know, we'll help them make the decision to help us and help you build this clinic, you know, and, and maybe help donate or bring, you know, bring the prices down. So we can, we can provide a better experience for very technicians in Massachusetts. You know, it is a, is both a, you know, you know, obviously it's a for-profit entity. But, you know, there's, there is a, there is a, a great cause here. And so we're, we will work with our vendors also.
Okay. Thank you for your candor and for your willingness to discuss the difficult topic.
Ford.
Ma'am, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let's, we can put a motion on the table and we can see if there are questions after.
I'll second it.
Make a motion that the school committee authorized the superintendent to enter into a memorandum of understanding re-animal health and welfare center based on the draft dated 4/10/22.
Can I just ask in terms of your motion? I think Ed had made a slightly, had suggested a slightly different motion since there were some things in here that haven't been decided yet.
Well, I think Ford's embellishment of the motion was in line with the intent of the motion.
Could you repeat that since it's not written down?
Well, I'll just do the one that's written down and give it as briefer to approve the memorandum of understanding with Boston Veterinary Clinic.
And authorize the superintendent to execute.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, um. Is there further, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, let's move to our roll call. So it's the motion that is in the packet, adding authorizing the superintendent to enter into an agreement. Starting our roll call, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Wadu Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lanny Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Skula Needham, yes, but only if you bring some of those dogs to our meetings.
Alice DeLucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Paul and Brian, thank you, Peter, for joining us at our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Real close to it.
Yeah, we're excited about this project.
We are too. We are too. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, continuing with our outside presenters, if we can move to the finance report B, FY21 budget audit presentation.
MacIntyre is on.
Okay, and is there Steve or Rich, are you starting or are we going directly into Scott?
I was just going to give a brief introduction, introduce Scott McIntyre, who is a principal with Melant and Heath. He's here to talk about the FY21 report. Take it away, Scott.
Thank you and good evening. And I thought I had my camera on a second ago and other, it, but it's telling me that my video is not working. So I apologize for that. I really thought it was working just moments ago. I'll try to get it going in, in, in just a moment. Thank you very much for the invitation to come in tonight to, to your meeting. And I'll walk you through our, our audit of your financial statements in just a moment. Julia, if it's possible to, to, to share a screen, can you set, set it so that I can share the screen? And I still think the, the committee will be able to, to see it, even though you can't see me.
I'd really like to see you, Mr. McIntyre.
I, give me just a moment then please and.
Yeah, well, we can pause for a moment if you want to take a moment to try and get your camera on.
All right.
Thank you.
I know the chair had some problems with the volume earlier. I had problem, you know, two years into this, I should, I should be pretty good at it. But for some reason, I had a little technical difficulties tonight. So anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to, to come before the committee and walk through our results of your June 30, 2021 audit. As I was saying, Julia, if it's possible for you to permit me to share my screen, I would.
You're all set, Scott.
Thank you. In just a moment, I'll, I'll, I'll start walking through the, the financial statements. And while I begin to share my screen, I, I would like to, you know, give you sort of the overview. Before we get into the report itself, I think it's important for us to communicate to those charged with governance of the district that our audit of your financial statements went very well. What that really means is that when we came in to audit your books and records, we found things to be in, in good working order. And as a result of that, we did not need to propose any significant audit entries as a result of our work. In other words, we found your, your financial statements to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. A couple of other things that the auditing standards require us to communicate with, with the committee tonight is that we did not have any disagreements in how to apply generally accepted accounting principles between the district and our firm. And a third of the three major are must communicates involve the accounting estimates. There are several estimates in your, in your financial statements. The most, the, the largest, if you will, deal with your, your net OPEB liability and your net pension asset from, from an accounting standpoint. We'll talk very, very quickly about both of those. There's also some very small, you know, estimates in there when it comes to allowance for collections of receivables as well as estimated useful lives. So, but with that said, I'm going to, you know, just go over and share my screen to show your independent auditors report. For those that may be following along, this, it may have a hard copy of this. This is, this is page one. It's page four of, of the PDF.
Not seeing it, Scott.
How about now?
Yep. Well, it's, yep, okay.
You see the independent auditors report?
Yep.
Thank you. Boy, like I said, two years into this and I'm struggling mightily tonight. So I do apologize to the, to the committee. Anyway, the, the independent auditors report that you have up here in front of us, this is the, probably the most important communication that we can make is that what it tells you is that based on the auditing standards that we have followed, in our opinion, your financial statements are totally in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for governments here in the United States of America, sometimes referred to as a clean opinion. Technically, in the audit world, we call it an unmodified opinion, meaning there are no modifications. It is completely in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So it goes on for a couple of pages, but that's really, really the highlight. Following that is your management's discussion and analysis. That's a great resource to go back to at a later point in time, to understand why certain key account balances may, may have changed during the year. Following that is your long-term perspective balance sheet. It's important for the committee to, to remember that there's both a long-term perspective view in, in this financial statement in a short term, almost a cash basis review. This page up in front, up, up on the screen right now is the asset side of your long-term perspective financial statements. I'm really going to scroll down to the, to the liability side and, and net, net position or equity side of, of, of the long-term perspective balance sheet. And I'm going to focus just for a couple of minutes on your net OPEB liability with an account balance as of 6/30/21 of just under $25 million. And as a point of reference, a year ago, that account balance had a liability of about $32 million. So there's about a $7 million drop in that, in that key, key liability, really driven mostly by experience gains and, and plan design changes. Now, it's important to note that although the committee has a, pardon me, the, the district has a, a trust fund established for, for OPEB benefits with a balance of about $400,000 in it. Given the size of the liability, the standards are requiring you to use essentially a very, very low discount rate. You have a discount rate, which is the expected future earnings of, of, of your OPEB trust fund of about 2.2%. With a larger trust, you might be permitted to, pardon me, yeah, with a larger trust, you might be permitted to use a higher discount rate, which could otherwise reduce that liability. In the end, really, I just wanted to make sure that the committee saw this long-term perspective balance sheet. In our opinion, we think any communication about a government's financial statement should include the long-term perspective and in a particular key, key liabilities like the net OPEB liability. But in reality, the most, the place that most readers are going to turn to with your financial statements is your governmental funds balance sheet and the focus is going to be in the general fund, that first column of numbers. And the real focus is going to be in the bottom third, the fund balance section, which is of course, the difference between your assets and the liabilities. And as of June 30/21, you had a total fund balance of about $6.3 million. And it's important to understand the components of, of, of that total fund balance. About $1.2 million of that is unassigned, meaning there are no constraints on those, on the, on those dollars. And that becomes the starting point for your certification of E and D. Above that is your assigned fund, fund balance with an account balance as of about $3.8 million. Now there's about, there's three major components to that. The first one is about. The first one is about two point seven million dollars in current year, prior year tuition revenue that is going to be used towards fiscal year twenty-three. The second major component is approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars in, in certified use of certified E and D that's going towards the operating budget in fiscal year twenty-two. And the third piece that's included in that three point eight million dollars is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in monies that were voted by the committee back in June of twenty twenty-one to go towards your building state stabilization fund. And as is disclosed in the, in this report, the, the appropriateness of that, of that transfer needs to be discussed, and I think it is being discussed with the State Department of Revenue and the, and, and the Department of Education. Above that is your committed fund balance of about two point three million dollars. That two, pardon me, one, one point three million dollars. That is your building stabilization fund. Now, in discussions between our firm and, and, and the district, it's been, we think it's best that the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is in question that you need to iron out a few details with the State Department of Revenues. We think the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is best presented as, as an assigned fund balance because it's pending, pending resolution, some component of that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars may have to reduce future, you know, revenues for the district. It, it still needs, needs to be worked out. So we thought the lesser, the lower level classification of assigned fund balance for that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was more appropriate than to show it as a committed fund balance and actually part of that building stabilization fund. Right now, it's sort of, we hope to get it into that building stabilization fund, and that's really what is meant by a fund balance assignment. You know, management here is, is designating those dollars to go in there. And if you're able to get approval from the State Department of Revenue, it'll just go up from assigned fund balance to, to committed fund balance. Now, just for a moment to talk very quickly about the, the unassigned fund balance, because if there's any one number that people will turn to in this financial statements, it's, it's that one million two oh one. And just as a point of reference, a year ago, June thirty, twenty twenty, that had a balance of about five hundred thousand dollars in it. So almost a seven hundred thousand dollar increase as a result of your, your favorable budget versus actual results of operation from fiscal year twenty-one have bolstered, bolstered that have bolstered that key account, the unassigned fund balance up to one point two million dollars. Now, that one point two million dollars represents just a hair under the five percent of your budget. And I'm sure the committee is well aware, statutorily, you cannot exceed, but, but that account balance cannot exceed five percent of, of the, of, of, of your, of your budget. So getting back to the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's included in this assigned, which was subject to that vote that the committee took back in June of twenty twenty-one. If the Department of Revenue can't find a way to favorable resolve this to to, to where I think everybody wants to be, which is to get this into your building stabilization fund, and they require it to be removed down to your unassigned fund balance, what it's gonna do is it's gonna cause you to exceed that five percent threshold. And what that might mean, I, I want to emphasize it's a might, because I think there's still some things that can be worked out here. But it might mean that a portion of that five fifty may need to be returned to the member towns in accordance with, with the statutes. But I, I guess, based on my experience, and I've been doing this work for, for over, over thirty years, I think that a very favorable outcome here is, is certainly, certainly possible. So that is a super, super quick walkthrough of our audit of your financial statements. Again, the, the focus, I, I didn't want to point out the net OPEB liability, but the focus really should be on the fund balances in the general fund, an understanding of the five hundred and fifty in that it's in this bucket right here, but it may need to go come down here. Or quite possibly, if there's some favorable results that can, can be achieved with the Department of Revenue, it moves up the ladder to a committed fund balance. But I guess I would want to start, sort of conclude by pointing out again that in our opinion, our audit of your financial statements went very well. And as a result of finding the books and records to be in good working order, we did not need to propose any significant audit entries in order for your financial statements to be materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So again, that's a super, super quick walkthrough of our audit of your financial statements. And I will try to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Okay, Jeff.
I have a few questions, a couple which I believe that you've already answered. So the first one would be, what issues, if any, with Minuteman's financial record keeping and procedures? And I think you gave us a clean rating here, so I think that that's answered. The other one would be, what issue, if any, with Minuteman's financial status? And I think you brought up a few issues that were most on your mind, which was OPEB and this five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we want to go someplace, but we don't know if it has to go. So other than that, are there any issues about the financial status of the school that we should be discussing now, or is that the, the main topics?
I think you summarized the main topics very, very well.
And then I have another question, which is, I'm not, perhaps my memory is not quite in, in intact, but it seems that the section of the OPEB trust fund, the pension trust fund and the MTRS is longer than they have been in some previous audits. So I'm wondering if I'm, maybe I just spent more time reading it this time? Or is this that more of this material is included in the audit than it was in the past?
The joke in the audit profession is that the Gatsby never met a disclosure it didn't like. And what I mean by that is, yes, the, the disclosures of all three of those plans, you know, your, your retirement system plan, MTRS and OPEB, that's, those disclosures seem to expand every, every year. So it's, as, as Gatsby continues to evolve, they generally add disclosure requirements. Although I will say there is a proposed standard out there that would limit or, or attempt to reduce some of this disclosures. Because quite honestly, I would tell you, I have told Gatsby this, I think some of the disclosures are, are very excessive.
So disclosures, meaning the type of reporting that is required and the length, therefore the length of those sections?
Yes.
Okay. And the final related question is, I noticed that, and I don't know if this was because of the audit or because of something else we're supposed to discuss. There was some discussion about the entire Vanguard portfolio of the OPEB was included in our packet. I'm wondering if that was because of something in the audit, or is that something other reason that that was included? Because I don't think that that's been included in the past. So perhaps that's a Rick question or a Steve.
Yeah, if I might be able to answer that. We, we had asked to have an update on that from time to time at the Finance Committee meeting. So it's just more, I think, more information than anything else.
Okay, so it's information and not some sort of disagreement as to the appropriateness of that methodology of holding it? Is there, no, so you talked a little bit about in the audit about risk factors. I don't know if that was boilerplate, or you're trying to subtly say that maybe there are more risk factors than necessary in the OPEB. These just talked about the OPEB one way, and then you talked about the state, I guess, retirement system with fewer of the risk factors pointed out, is what I'm just saying. So the OPEB is more and the, the retirement system is fewer.
Again, and I kind of meant it somewhat jokingly, but the Gatsby really has never met a disclosure it doesn't like. And the interest rate risk factors and, and all those types of things are very, very standard disclosures in, in any governmental set of financial statements.
Okay, so it's no reflection on any issues we may have. It's just the in, increasing requirements of disclosure that caught my attention.
Yes.
Okay, so thank you very much. And I, I think that your presentation really nailed on the head what I was most interested in before I even have to ask any questions. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alice.
Oh, the reason there is no management letter is because you didn't see a need to have a management letter. Is that right?
That, that's correct. Auditing standards require us to communicate things like material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. And our, as based on the standards we follow, we did not identify any material weaknesses.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, you know, back in the Pleistocene era, we used to get these things which were your bound copies, where you had your letterhead and your marks all over the documents. And the ones that we're looking at are, are draft, but there's never any remark that it's from Melanson and Heath anywhere on it. And I was wondering if we're going to receive a copy of the document that is an official Melanson and Heath document that would make the people from the Pleistocene era like myself more comfortable.
You, you absolutely will. I had a, a meeting with the, I hope I say it right, but maybe the Finance Subcommittee last week. You folks tonight, and then we expect the administration to give us the go-ahead to, to finalize this. And then we will produce reports for, that can be distributed.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jeff.
Just a quick comment that it's really a delight, two years in a row with no management letter. So good job to the, to the Finance Department at Minuteman and the administration and to the Finance Subcommittee and helping us.
I think it's more than two years, but thank you.
I'll look back to verify.
Please, please, and report back to us.
Yeah, congratulations. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Scott, for your presentation and for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Scott. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
And I guess the school committee doesn't need to accept the audit, is that correct?
I don't think there's an official requirement for that. They're reporting to you, so.
Okay.
It's not like town meeting reports.
Okay, so continuing, if we can go to seven E, the, the bond issues.
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn Welsh is with us, and she's gonna explain the final borrowing that we need to go through to bridge us to the closeout with MSBA. Hi, Lynn.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Hi, thanks for joining us.
Oh, my pleasure. It's, we're finally at the tail end after, what, ten years? Of going and trying to get this project, but I've been up and saw the building. It's beautiful. So what you have in front of you tonight, unlike what you've seen in prior financing, there's no official vote for you to take. Because we are financing this note through the Department of Revenue for certification. It's small enough that we don't have to go through that whole prospectus and rating process. So there's no vote. I, basically Nikki and I are here tonight just to explain that this is the last tail end piece that we envision that we'll have to borrow. This portion is, as you know, the MSBA withholds five percent of the funding until the final audit is completed. So this is gonna get the cash flow needed for those little, you know, dot the i's, cross the t things that we need to do in order to get this final audit through MSBA. We do envision that most of this two point eight million on this note will be grant funded. That's the expectation as we stand here today. So what you have in front of you, again, there's no formal vote here, just to explain to you what this is, why it's a little different than what the school committee has seen in the past, and obviously to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Lynn? Ford.
The only comment I'll have to make is, is that I don't think we're gonna get it finally wound down in the closeout until December. It takes that long. So we are gonna be, we're applying now to be on the December. I forget, it was December sixteen or something like that meeting to have that happen. And then we expect that we'll get money back.
Yeah, and, and so Ford, to your point, we actually took a little bit more conservative route. And Nikki and Kevin and I, when we were talking about, well, when this, we really want this note to mature. We don't want to have to roll it again and wait for the MSBA audit, you know, like for another couple of months. So we decided to be a little conservative, and that's why it matures in April. My experience with MSBA, there's a lot of projects, there's a lot of audits. They're taking a long time, even though they're auditing your project as it goes along for that final tie-out. It does, it may not come in at the end of the year as you're, you're expecting. But, so we, we brought it into April just to give us a little extra time so we wouldn't have to go back out and go through the process of getting bids again, you know, for thirty, sixty days, whatever hap, you know, whatever it may be. But I think the April maturity of this note will be ready to just tie everything up at that point.
And we're hoping to have all of our information to the MSBA mid-September to meet that December guideline, because they need a couple of months to go through.
Right. Yep, yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
It was a good interest rate. I hope you all noticed that. I thought it was one point nine five percent.
No, for what we're seeing, Ed, it's in this day and age, I don't think in my thirty-plus years, I've ever seen the rates increase so, so fast as they have in the last six months. You know, it's just been, it's, the bond market is, is a little bit crazy, particularly on the short-term side. We have a lot of banks standing on the sidelines, underwriters, not wanting to really jump into anything long-term because they know what the Fed is going to do. They anticipate rates are gonna go up, and nobody wants to be stuck with a, you know, a lower interest rate in their portfolio if they can, you know, if they can avoid it. So it's very interesting times in the bond market and note market these days.
Thank you, Lynn.
Hey, no other questions? And while there is a vote on the agenda, you know, we understand that we do not need to enter into that vote today. Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us.
Welcome. I'm gonna miss you guys after all these years. Take care.
I appreciate everyone take, taking things out of order for the guests. I appreciate that.
Yeah, so let's move back up to the superintendent's report.
Annual town meetings have all been completed. We have a budget, nine votes. Most of them were unanimous. So thank you all. And I, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting with the town managers this Friday morning. They're coming in to meet the new superintendent. I'm having a little breakfast for her and for them, and we're gonna talk about the audit issues that Scott was referencing in regards to that five hundred and fifty thousand. I'm also have a meeting with the Department of Revenue Director of Accounts tomorrow at ten AM in regards to this as well. In your packet, there's a revised two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. The only change in that calendar, which I'm really excited to talk to you about, is that we have found a way with the Agreement of the Union to reincorporate common planning time. An hour and ten minutes, we've been able to incorporate twenty-eight of those and maintain six two-hour professional developments. In addition to that, and then our, we're contracted to have some early releases before vacations and stuff, and we have though, and we're eight, six hours over the nine ninety. So we presented today to the Academy Development Team, which has been keeping our feet to the fire and getting common planning time back in.
Jennifer, you have a question?
So I'm assuming those are the early releases on Wednesdays, on many Wednesdays in the month.
I, I didn't hear the first part.
Those are the early releases on Wednesdays, so, okay. So that was a question I had. I also, there's some on the notes below the months, some of the dates aren't chronological. So if you look at December fourteenth is the last note, but it says December fourteenth after the vacation. I think that should be fixed. I think people will miss that.
Okay.
You see what I mean?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So there's a couple of months where that happens so that they're not.
So in the narrative below the calendar.
Exactly.
Chronological order, yeah.
And I remember in old calendars, for those kind of things, like early releases, they used to be bold or some way so people would know that it was different. So they would look. That's the only comments I had.
No, those are great. Thanks.
Judy. Judy?
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. That's, you caught what I was going to say and I was going to suggest just a different color. You know, anything it takes.
Can I have a motion to approve the school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
People do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Oh, Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes. Out of whack.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes.
Thank you. There's our annual school choice vote. Do not participate. Question came up this year. We still have a column in our assessment formula that says choice. So like, for instance, in Acton, I think there was one or two choice students. Those are vocational choice students. Based upon a longstanding agreement. If a, so a student from Acton was going to Assabette or the Shoba for a program we didn't have. And so we have an agreement between the schools that we just pay the 5,000. But that's the, that vote, I think, was taken in 1993. I looked. So I have a motion to not participate.
Do not participate in choice as written in the agenda.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I wasn't clear on the 1993 business. We're just voting not to allow choice, correct?
Yep.
So what was the 1993 stuff?
That's an agreement that we have between vocational schools. When a student from one of our member towns wants a vocational program that we don't offer, and they go to another vocational school. We manage a school choice $5,000 payment through our assessment process, not through the district itself. It's been going on since I got here. I, they reference a 1993 agreement.
Can I just ask, given that, and given that there's this exception, does the way that the motion is.
There's no problem with the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, we frequently have on our town meeting warrant odd little bills from a student from another vocational, who's gone to another vocational district for that reason. But they're never school choice type numbers. They're always much more.
That means they would have originated in that from an eighth grade perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
My only comment is that this, the way that we have to do this very weird vote every year to not participate in this program is unlike anything we have to do. And we have to make sure that a new superintendent coming in, for example, this has to go on her calendar right away because it is so counterintuitive. So like if Ed didn't remember bringing it up every year, I would, I would, you know, completely forget it. And it's very important that we do it at the right time.
Well, it's on the superintendent's checklist, which is published by the Department of Ed every year.
Okay.
And Julie and I are reviewing that with Dr. Dawson Thursday morning, first thing. And if she still wants the job after that, then we'll be all.
Okay, anything else? Or let's move on to the vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
People do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes.
Thank you. Katie's with us if we have any questions about the Skills USA trip to the Nationals. We have the money budgeted, but we've traditionally gone through a vote for this process. So I'll turn it over to Katie.
Sure. So just some additional information on that. We do have seven students going off to Nationals, which will be in Atlanta, Georgia. Three of them are competing in the Career Path Showcase for Industry in Engineering Technology. Another team of three is competing in the Career Path Showcase for Natural Resources, Agriculture and Food. And then we have another student who's going as a delegate. They won gold for their freshman competition was their exploratory project demonstration. And we also have three chaperones going, one of our Skills USA advisors, a male staff member and a female staff member. So that will be the last week in June. It's June 20th through the 25th.
And the cost is about, what did we estimate?
That's about 19,000.
And we have the funds budgeted, so.
And do we need a motion regarding that?
We already approved.
We already.
We already approved the trip. We're just kind of giving you up.
Okay.
Yeah, I misspoke there.
Any questions for Katie on that?
Judy, just good luck.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Pretty exciting.
Yeah, thanks.
School Building Committee Report, and we kind of gave some of that forward.
We did the MSBA project update. Will be done mid-December, God willing. It's just a lot of paperwork that has to be done in the meantime, and that's all being taken care of. Athletic field update, really the most important thing about that is, is within a week, we'll be closing out on that process. Their deciding is going on and I'm looking is moving its stuff off campus. I really strongly urge all of you, if you have the opportunity to go and drive by, you can get out and walk around. It's, it's absolutely sensational. The field is being used by the school on a regular basis. All athletic events are going on, baseball, softball, lacrosse. And we did have a wonderful event put on by the students to honor and say goodbye to our superintendent the other day and all the students. I'd never seen all the students in my life, but I saw all the students. All, how many of them? Six, 700 students and staff all out in the field. And so the fields are well used, so please go up. It's very exciting. The north, north building is, that is progressing satisfactorily. And it's just in a planning stage. Yeah, so that's my report.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Ford? Okay, let's move on to the school report. Busy time of year.
Katie.
All right, so our outstanding vocational student, we honored him a couple of weeks ago along with 53 other students from across the state at Mechanics Hall in Worcester. It was a great evening. Trevor Simon was our student. He's a senior in plumbing, a great student. He's also the co-captain of the football team. He's a student who was out on a cooperative education work experience. After high school, he plans to continue on to receive some of his licenses and continue in the plumbing field. So it was just a great event to showcase one of our Minuteman students. Any questions on that? Great. And then the next thing is just the WOW program. Again, that was run over April break. We had 112 middle school students enrolled in the program. We had about 20 staff members that also worked the week. It was just really fun to be with middle school kids. You know, we work with high school kids all the time, so it was fun to kind of get a little glimpse into the middle school scene. One of my favorite quotes from them was, a kid was wondering if the Paul Revere Room was named after Paul Revere because he's visited there. To which I said, no, I don't think he's been here. That was pretty fun, but it was just a fun week with the kids. They're very excited about all of our program offerings. Just to listen to some of their comments, they were so impressed with our offerings and our staff and just kind of, you know, our mini world at Minuteman. They couldn't believe it was a school and that they had the opportunity to come here if they wanted to and study a career. So it was a very cool promotional event for Minuteman and also for the students to learn more about themselves and their passions. So it was a great success. We plan on running it again next year as well.
Hopefully expanding it a bit too.
Yep.
So we listed a bunch of upcoming events. I don't know if anyone has any questions about them. I'll draw your attention to graduation on June 3rd. If you're planning to attend, please let Julia know. I'd encourage you to do that. It won't be that long since we, there's only about 122 graduating seniors. Graduations after this year will be much longer, so. That concludes our report. Oh, Ford had a question.
Yeah, I really do hope that all of us can attend to graduation. It is Ed's final graduation and I think it'd be great if we all could be there, possible. Thank you.
Rich and Steve are up. You're muted, Stevie.
Yeah, I know. Just briefly from the Finance Committee, you're pretty much, what you already saw this evening is what we saw back on May 9th. The auto report and the, and the report on the short-term borrowing. We also did look at our third quarter financials as well. But pretty much everything's in good shape and moving forward. And I'll defer to Rich for the other items.
Thank you, Steve. In your packet, like Steve said, there is a third quarter financial statements for your information. Again, most of the things that we are, are in red or in negative, we've already addressed in Q2. But I will answer any other questions that may be.
Any other questions for Rich on the third quarter financial statement? Okay.
The OPEV Vanguard statement, that was a request of the FinCom in either last meeting or the meeting before to bring forward. We're going to do that on a quarterly basis. You can see inside of this one, we are down a little bit. But that's just doing to the chaotic markets and so forth. More of it just for your information. So unless there's a question, I'll move on.
Doesn't seem to be.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the monthly information, list of donations. I asked the school committee to approve the monthly list of donations in your packet.
Okay, any questions, comments? Let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes.
Thank you. And lastly, I asked the school committee to vote on the request for the disposal of surplus property as presented in your packet.
So motion, thank you. Second. Any questions? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much to the Finance Committee, Rich, Nikki, everyone involved. Move on to committee reports, Superintendent Negotiation and Evaluation Subcommittee.
I'm muted. We are basically still waiting for the executive summary and the supporting documents. So I'm thinking it's going to be the June meeting and then hopefully, maybe if I can get it out before then, I can get it to you guys within, and give maybe two weeks. I see Dan's on the call, so maybe he can give us me an idea of what the timeframe might be. Maybe.
Hopefully early next week, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay, so I'll review it and then we can put together, Julia can put together a survey and we can get that out. And maybe I can get it all correlated by the June meeting. That would be my goal.
Thank you, Jennifer. Transition task force, Ford.
Thank you. As you all know, Pam, Jeff and Alice and myself are on it. We've had two meetings with Kathleen. Superintendent and they're very, going very well. Basically, we have told her that these are her meetings. She's going to be setting the agenda from now on. We're here only to assist her from a school committee point of view. And so good progress is being made, thanks to our current superintendent. Arrangements are made for her to move into 10 Mill Street. And those arrangements are being made, as well as arrangements have been made by Superintendent Dr. McQuillan. Also to, for five meetings for her and schedules are being put up, posted. And their meeting with the leadership team and everything else that goes on into, so running the school. So, you know, I really am very appreciative of Ed and Julia for working on this. And I think it's going very well. She's looking forward to her, her arrival in July.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. And policy? Alex?
So we have a quick policy. It's on the page number 118 in your packet. This is a policy for the school committee to allow itself to have consent agendas on its regular agenda. So the reason for this is that in reviewing the last meeting minutes from March, I made a quick calculation that we were spending 13% of the time make stating and then voting on motions. So those are minutes you don't get back. So this type of policy is used in other school districts. I actually put together a bunch of policies from other school districts, which didn't make it into the packet. But other school districts do this, town meetings do it, other town boards do it. They are things like lists of donations might be something that you would put into this. The minutes, anything that is considered to be a non-controversial item becomes one motion, all of them together. And then anybody on the school committee gets a chance to say, really, I want to have a knockdown, drag-out discussion about the minutes. And then it just gets yanked out of the consent calendar and considered separately. So in order to do that, we have to vote on this at two meetings. And then we could start start doing it. We have two different ways for the school committee members to remove something from the consent calendar. One is that the chair would ask the members if they want to do that. And the other would be something that Amy thought of, which is to allow people to contact the chair off sort of outside of the meeting to say, I want to take that out of the consent calendar so that there isn't any shy person who doesn't feel comfortable. You know, doing that in the big public meeting, they get, still get to do it. And there's, in the very first sentence, it says that it's an annual vote. So any school committee in the future might say, you know, we really don't want to do that anymore. And they could vote not to do it. So that's the summary of what we have before us. And I guess we could take a motion and discuss it.
I will move to approve this for first reading.
Okay. Ford?
I strongly endorse this. I think I'm seeing that throughout town government. And I've been to a lot of towns and seeing what they're doing. And I, I think this would be a great way to move our meetings around so we can spend more time on substantive issues.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, well, let's do the vote. Here we go, spending some time. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
People do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes. Probably about 40 seconds because we were missing two people.
Okay, Secretary's report.
I received no comments on either set of minutes.
I will move to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
Second. Let's see, do we have the same group of people present at both meetings? So we can take it as one vote.
Nope.
Well, let's do them separately.
Okay.
Can you revise that?
So I will move to accept the meeting minutes from February 8th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Or it's folding over, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes. Next set is March 15th.
And I will move to accept the meeting minutes from March 15th, 2022 as presented.
Second. Discussion? Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes. Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes. And I would like to point out that in the second set that you just approved, there is a different format for the votes, which is now a table, which will make it so that in order to, you can just cut and paste that and slap it in there and change it from yes to no and not have to worry about the long list of votes. It shortens the minutes and it also makes it less troublesome to do these ridiculous votes. Thank you.
And actually, Alice, the best part of the consent calendar is there are fewer votes in which we can embarrassingly get our vote out of order because we don't remember the alphabet. And that's my primary reason for voting for that. I'm very much.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, do we have business for an executive session this evening?
We do not.
With that, could I have a?
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, then let's do our roll call again. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Steve Ladue conquered, yes. Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockard Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes.
Thank you. A lot of good work tonight. And we got done in less than two hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all at our June meeting.
Or before, if I need you.
Graduation.
Graduation.
Yes.
And go south to city meetings.
Go south.